Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Maryland City Council Combined Meeting on Monday, February 10th, 2025. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and roll call. Oh, let's see what we've got here. Please show Councilmember Fuller will be absent today for today's meeting. Up next, we've got approval of the minutes. Approval of the minutes of the January 13th, 2025 combined meeting and the January 29th, 2025 special Main Street meeting. Comments, questions, concerns regarding those minutes? Hearing none. I'm looking for a motion in regards to that.
I'll move to accept the minutes of the last January 13th combined council meeting and the January 29th special meeting.
For a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carries. Up next, we've got Reception and Delegation, Stormwater Management. Chris Heine, Carroll County Director of Planning and Land Management.
Yes, good evening, Chris. So, yes, I'm Chris Heine. I'm Director of Planning and Land Management for the county. A little bit of background about our department. We have several agencies related to everything, planning and resource management. That includes our Bureau of Comprehensive Planning, the AgPRES program, and Development Review, where we manage the development process in the county. And then our Bureau of Resource Management, which addresses natural resources, environmental type issues in the county, which includes the review of environmental codes for development processes, which includes landscape code and grading and stormwater management, which is why I'm here tonight. So, what's interesting is there's quite a matrix that we follow regarding what reviews we do for the various municipalities. So, each municipality is a little bit different. Stormwater is interesting in that the county does the reviews for stormwater management for every municipality except for the city of Tawnytown. And so, from that perspective, recently been talking with the Maryland Department of the Environment regarding stormwater codes. I happen to be a stormwater engineer, as well as the Director of the Department. And so, I'm on a stakeholder group with Maryland Department of the Environment, looking at proposed new regulations for stormwater management. These are new regulations that come from legislative requirement related to climate change and flooding and so on. And so, as part of that stakeholder group, I've been reviewing these regulations. And in the next year, thereabouts, the state will be passing these new regulations, first as a draft, and then will be adopted. And it'll require both the county and the city of Tawnytown to adopt new codes related to match the new state requirements. So, I broached the subject with Jim to keep him up to date with what's going on and the work that we've been doing with the state. And we started talking about the review of stormwater management in the city. So, I'm not asking for things to change, as it were. That would certainly be some additional work for my staff. However, there'd be a lot of benefits for bringing Tawnytown back into the fold as far as doing stormwater reviews. The primary thing would be consistency throughout the county. So, all of the engineer, engineering firms and surveyors that do development work in the county, they're familiar with the county codes. And it makes things a little bit different when they do work in Tawnytown because there are a different set of codes. They're similar, but they're different than the rest of the county. So, consistency would be a big improvement. It's something that we strive for. We're always looking to improve the development review process and make things easier for the development community. So, it's something to consider. There really would not be much impact regarding the changing the code, your code, to then adopt the county code and have the county perform the stormwater management reviews. There'd be no cost associated with that for the city. And there would be the consistency for reviews, in part because there can be some complexities regarding stormwater management, some aspects of it related to dam safety, the county has to perform. We've been delegated by the state to perform those reviews. And so, if stormwater management involves that aspect, now you're talking about two different entities currently who are looking at those stormwater reviews for different aspects. So, just looking to clarify and make things more consistent. So, I really, that's about the extent of what I had to bring before you all. Certainly happy to answer any questions. I do think that moving this direction would enhance the relationship that the county has with the city, as well as all the other municipalities. We work very well together. You've probably heard of the Water Resources Coordination Council, that all eight municipalities, the county and the Health Department participate in, related to all things water-related, as well as the city and the other municipalities are all party to the NPDS permit that some of the county has, which is, relates to the Clean Water Act and improving the quality of the water in the county. So, it just would be one more thing related to the stormwater management side, that everybody's working consistently with the same code, et cetera. So, that's really all I had, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions from council?
Actually, the only question I have is to the city manager. If they're going to do this for free, are we currently paying somebody?
The review costs during the development process or the development review process are borne by the developer. So, we, CDM Smith reviews it for us, charges us. We pay CDM Smith and pass it on to the developer through their escrow, through their escrow account. So, right, so for the city, really, there's no financial change for it. So, the developers will be subject to the county's fee structure for the review, rather than the hourly rate the CDM charges, depending upon, you know, who at CDM is reviewing it. You know, certainly they try to have the, you know, not a senior engineer looking at all the calculations and such at, you know, a higher hourly rate. We've worked with them to try to get their reviews to the, you know, I'll say the most affordable rung in the structure that can accommodate, that can, you know, perform the functions. But the developers might see a change in, you know, in that structure. But for the city, for the city, there's no...
We'd save a little bit of employee time, correct, though?
It would.
And that's where we'd see the saving, I guess, would be the employee time on it. But it's not, I mean, you're just talking about the escrow management or anything like that, right?
Right. I mean, we'll still have, you know, activity through the escrow account for other things, you know, as projects move through the process. And we start talking about their public works agreements, insurity, and then bonds and things like that. You know, at that point, the city attorney's involved. And, you know, he's, his expenses, you know, to the city are then recovered through the escrow from the developers. So, again, that's another pass-through. Basically, everything other than staff time involved in development review, passed on to the developer. Traffic studies, all that stuff.
Anything that would be counter, I guess, something that would counter us, this being beneficial to us?
No. We have talked about this off and on for a number of years. And, you know, I think I've brought it up. We know, we know the state moves rather slowly, but for the last couple of years, I've periodically talked about this, a storm, advancing stormwater resiliency in Maryland, and the changes that are coming down the pike. And we're getting close to that now. And that's why, you know, when Chris and I started talking about this again, I invited him to come present to you guys, because since we are going to need to be updating our code, and we, it just makes sense, in my opinion, to leverage the county's code. You know, we share so many other development-related codes, forest conservation, landscaping, floodplain, that this kind of helps us align, so that when we have projects going through, we're not going to have the, and I'm not saying this happens frequently, but, you know, we won't have disconnects between, you know, our stormwater code and some of those other codes.
And maybe making plan changes based on something else the county is talking about.
And this would help us avoid situations like that. I did speak with our, you know, consultant engineers about this. And Brian Lubinow and I have talked about this off and on for a couple of years now as well. So, even though, and I wasn't sure if we were going to get into a lot of discussion tonight or not, but even though this would be taking some work away from CDM Smith, Brian did point out some ways that this would be beneficial to the city. And Chris mentioned some of these already. But one thing that currently CDM Smith doesn't do these reviews all that frequently. So, when they do a stormwater review for us, they kind of have to dust off the code and refresh themselves with it. And, you know, it's not something that's routine for them. And also, our code is, you know, a one-off code. Nobody else has the exact same code that we do. But as Chris mentioned, local developers and engineers are familiar with the county supplement and the county review process already. And the county stormwater program has increased staffing, and so they've got good turnaround times for the reviews at this point. And also, the stormwater management regulations and manual are very complex. And, well, I touched on this a moment ago, and often require CDM Smith to review, the review team to refresh on the standards due to breaks in the need for a development review. So, there were a couple of just, you know, highlights that Brian pointed out as to ways that it would be beneficial to make the switch.
Do you know why we never did this in the first place?
There are legends. I'll just put it that way. I, I've heard a handful of different...
Hearing in the annals of time in Tawnytown?
I've heard a handful of different stories. And the one that I heard from a previous mayor was that there was a project that didn't go well. And the knee-jerk reaction was, well, we'll do it ourselves. And, you know, there are related stories of ponds being filled in and things like that, that the city kind of took it upon themselves to do many, many years ago, that I can't really...
As the attorney weighed in with an opinion on that?
So, we've had the conversation. And certainly, you know, if we do choose to move forward, it'll be, everything will be reviewed by the city attorney.
Yeah, because we need to make code adjustments.
Right. So, it would be a very basic code where we would just replace the language in the chapter, very much like we've done for, you know, animal control and floodplain and things like that. Basically, just saying that the code of Carroll County, Maryland, shall be the city's code, you know, as updated periodically, that sort of a thing. So that once we adopt it, when the code does have to change, it just automatically changes for us as well.
If stormwater regs do come through, it would be, we'd have to go back and change our code.
Exactly.
You'd have to hold...
Right. We're, we need to update it in the foreseeable future.
Like a council consensus to explore it?
So, if you're comfortable providing that consensus tonight, that's great. And I can start, start the wheels turning on it.
Go down the road, get a consensus?
I'm good with it.
I'd rather, I'd like to hear some input from...
Yeah, this is just consensus to explore it. Again, throw some...
I don't have any, on the surface, it makes sense. And I go back into the dim dark past like Jim does, and do remember some issues that we had, really, really at the very beginning of stormwater management. I mean, as was being introduced as a norm, as a code, that we had problems with the way things were getting approved. I don't remember the details. But I'm just, there was a reason we separated ourselves from the rest of the world. It served us well for all these years. I just don't react without making sure I understand the whole picture. And I, I don't really have any reason to object to it, I'll put it that way. By consensus, I would say, let's explore what we have to do. And it's unfortunate that Jay's not with us tonight, but I'd like to hear his comments.
So, Jim, yeah, go ahead and explore. It brings back something to march. Again, not necessarily legislation, but at least what it's looking like. And then we'll get the attorney's opinion, attorney's opinion in March as well.
That sounds good. And while Chris is still here, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did also talk about the stormwater facilities inspections that have to be done every three years, that the county may be able to assist with taking that off of our plates as well.
Yes, yeah.
So, that, you know, that is an area where we could realize a little bit of savings. It's not a, you know, it's only once every three years. But we are currently paying our engineer to go around with public works to do inspections. And that's, you know, that's a day-long, at least, effort. And then they develop a report on all the facilities, so.
Is there anything at the county level that we need to do as far as when we're making the swap over? Nothing the commissioners got to do or anything like that?
I was curious where it may be documented, as far as the agreement, who's going, who does which reviews. I'm not aware of any documentation. It's just, that's policy, that's how it's done. And to speak to Jim's point, state law requires that every stormwater facility get reviewed, inspected every three years. In the county, we've got just over 3,000 that we inspect. So, we're doing about 1,000 a year. I believe there are maybe two dozen, thereabouts, here in Tawnytown. So, that would not be a huge lift. I've already talked it over with my staff. And, yeah, we could accommodate doing those inspections as part of our regular work.
Okay. And I'm sure Jay will figure it out as we get to it in the legal review part. But again, yeah, I just wanted to check if he knew of anything like that. I appreciate additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next up, we have council member statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Would any council member like to make a statement? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Before we get to public comment, I just want to say one thing. And I'm sure council's aware of this, as the email was sent out last week. We are going out for the EDC role. We're going to aim to have all applications in by March 31st. And I know the city manager right now is collecting any input that you guys have regarding the EDC role, as far as what you'd like in the job description and stuff like that. I know we'll probably talk about it later tonight. But just as we talk about it, just please make sure you get it to him after the meeting as well, so he actually has it documented and everything like that. Any changes you're looking to make?
Mr. Mayor, while we're at the public comment period, do we want to do agenda items as well, since we...
Yeah, we can, yeah.
Since we're having the combined meeting this time?
Let's go ahead and, we're going to do public comment after everything. Then that way, it's all kind of consolidated. Okay. So, let's go down to resolution ordinances and the, oh, you, okay, you want to do both right now. I get what you're saying.
Right. That way, you get a chance to hear comments before you, before you act.
So, let's go ahead and do public comment pertaining to non-agenda and agenda items. There we go.
I'm Kenyatta Brooks. And I've been gone for a while, which is taking care of some business with my family. But I might be a little behind, so you can catch me up. So, I got two things that I brought up to Mr. Urick today. One is in reference to the position for, that Meech had. Is that position going to be posted on your Tawnytown website soon?
It'll be posted until March 31st for applications.
It'll be posted?
On the city website. And I'm sure there's additional, and you plan to do MNL as well and stuff like that, correct?
When will it be posted?
Well, right now, we're waiting for, we're waiting for comments from the council regarding the job description, everything like that. But once they have that over to Jim, once we've reviewed it, once we've updated the job description, it'll then go out. So, I'm hoping, hopefully, let's do a cutoff for council by the end of the week, as far as what those comments look like. And then let's try to get it posted out Friday or Monday.
And the second question, I have three. So, the second question is, are we suggesting to have a backup person to be with that position to make sure that there's follow-through being done?
For now, or?
Permanently. It's just...
I understand. Yeah, I understand your question, yes.
So, I'm just, so I'm just making a comment, I guess, that that'd be a good idea to have more than just one person. I know we don't, you guys don't have the staff here now, but maybe a person to work side by side with that individual, even if it's from another county, just to make sure things are being processed. I'm actually still looking for my funds from, for Tawnytown Community Partners. I haven't heard anything from, in reference to that. I guess you guys can look at that later. And then the third thing I have is, I'll wait till later. Thank you.
This will be the only public comment since they're combined right now?
Yeah, I'll probably, I'll just send an email for what I have.
Okay, okay. Fair enough. Just wanted to make sure you didn't miss out here. Thank you. Additional public comment pertaining to non-agenda and agenda items?
Oh, I have an email to read. Council received this email from an anonymous person. I don't know who it is. I have no affiliation or feeling either way, but it was asked of us to read it, so I'm going to read it. This email just says, Dear Mayor Miller and Tawnytown City Council, at the mayor and city council's special meeting on January 29th, I learned that Mayor Miller has chosen an individual who he deems most qualified for the Economic Development Director position, which this really, I know, but he made this determination without posting the position and shared that he had no current intention of posting the position. When multiple council members became concerned, the mayor's response was, you can shoot down that nomination, that's your prerogative. Mayor Miller, please understand the public perception here. You are forcing council to refuse your nominations so that you can continue the narrative that the current council is the sole problem in our local government. We're wasting valuable time and taxpayer money by not embarking on a comprehensive recruitment strategy from the beginning. This is not an example of transparency, sound management, or leadership skills, which is what our community is lacking in this very moment. Moving forward, I'd like you to consider giving all business owners in our community not only a voice, but the resources to be successful. After all, they have the most to lose. I would also like to comment on Mayor Miller's recent endorsement of Rachel Miller, his wife, to be on city council in the upcoming election. In a previous mayor and city council meeting, I recall Mayor Miller complaining that some city council members coordinated on an issue before the city council meeting, which he felt was unethical. Now, his wife is running for city council. Are we to believe that Christopher Miller and Rachel Miller will not be coordinating on issues outside of council meetings? This seems unlikely, given they are married and have vested interests. While I understand that this practice is not necessarily illegal, it is certainly an ethical dilemma that runs the risk of corruption within our local government, and demonstrates a continued effort to narrow voices within city council. Considering this could become a reality in the near future, I would like to encourage the mayor and council to share how they were, they will ensure that public interest is put before personal gain. And then he addressed, this person addressed the current council, while I know it is unlikely for some of you to be sitting here after the upcoming election, I want to reiterate the importance of speaking up for the city to those who will remain on council, as it seems we are going down a road with some very real consequences that the citizens of Tawnytown will have to endure. Mayor Miller, while I understand that you feel the city government was corrupt prior to your leadership, which might be true, you are continuing to tread that line. I encourage you to use the resources and voices sitting at the current table. I hope that in the future, the voices around your table will be a balanced and accurate representation of our community and the growing diversity among your citizens, though it does not seem we are going in that direction. While portions of this comment may be difficult for you all to hear, please know that my family and I are invested in this community and its success. My intention is not to add to the perception of drama within our city, but I'm concerned, and I know many others who have a similar sentiment. I hope that you will consider permitting write-in or online public comments in future meetings, as I believe this would increase your efforts towards transparency and improve community participation within our local government. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Tawnytown resident.
Sounds good. Additional comments, questions, concerns from council regarding that?
Comments too?
I know he's asking for comment regarding that. So, again, I was opening it up to council if they did have comment regarding it. Proceeding forward. Resolution ordinances and agreements. Introduction ordinance 01-2025, water recharge. Any questions, comments, concerns by council?
I have a couple of grammatical things that, just a couple of sentences read very difficulty. And I'll send these over to you separately. There's no sense waiting. Just a couple of things I think would help make this review easier.
I'll take a look. Thank you.
Same thing with the other ordinance. But you go ahead.
Yep. Looking, hearing no additional comments, questions, concerns. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Motion to approve the water recharge ordinance.
For a second?
Introduce.
Oh, introduce.
We're introducing this month. I'll second the motion for introduction.
Okay. Any comments, question, any further comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Up next, we have the ordinance 02-2025, building construction fees. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
Doesn't change anything, just a little language.
Hearing, no additional comments, questions, concerns. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Motion to introduce.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, ordinance 03-2025, fiscal year 2025, budget amendment number two. Looking for, or questions, comments, concerns regarding that?
Is that a lump sum contract with Portavin?
There is going to be roughly a $7,000 credit, because they ended up using a, rather than the scaffolding. I'm sorry. So, no, no, it was not, because it will change.
That was, that was why I was asking. You know, I had brought that up about the scaffolding, and they'd used like three little rings. Money in there for scaffolding that they obviously did not use.
Lesson, lesson learned for us, as far as timing, because they would have been, let's see, for the utility company to come out and cover the wires, because they're right at the curb line, we would have needed to get the utility permit through state highway, which would have delayed things significantly. So, we did not put together that we would have to involve state highway to put the scaffolding up on the sidewalk, because that's outside of the right of way. So, now we know.
But he respected that it turned out not to have been necessary anyway.
Right, right. So, it wasn't the preferred method to use the lift, but it, you know, did actually save a little bit of money. So, I know Kevin is on top of the billing with it. So, and they've been submitting daily reports and everything. So, very, the process has gone very smoothly, I think. And considering the weather that we've dealt with, they've made tremendous progress.
And they were working Sunday.
They coordinated with the HVAC, the heating and cooling equipment, to do that on the weekends, so that we could stay operational and have heat during the workday, with the exception of the city clerk's office. Had to suffer through with a little space heater.
Jack with a coat on.
But they, they really have coordinated very well with us, so.
I mean, it looks very nice. The work they're doing looks nice from the ground.
And you might notice the finial or spire is on the cupola for the first time in about 10 years. Now solid up there again. Gone very well.
Additional comments, questions, concerns regarding that? Hearing none, looking for a motion in regards to it?
Motion to introduce the budget amendment number two.
Looking for a second?
I will second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Up next, we have adoption. Resolution 2025-02, water allocation for February. Questions, comments, concerns by council?
Motion to approve the resolution 25, 2025.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries, Jim? Carrie's. Jim?
Okay. All righty. Under capital equipment, our vac truck has been pushed back to March. We were originally hoping to get that in January. So, so looking forward to that. That's gonna be very handy when we have to start verifying our water service line material, that we can use the hydro excavator part of it to do targeted, you know, small excavations to...
Didn't realize that had that, had that attachment on it, that's excellent.
Yeah.
Actually, I think I do remember it, but I just...
Let's see. As far as updates on the city code, you know, we just introduced those two for chapter 201 and chapter 82 for building construction, based on the recharge stuff. That's really all that I've got going on for chartering code at the very moment. Although, we will be looking at stormwater in the very near future. No change on the Roberts Mill claim letter. Riffles Lane made another attempt for that last property owner. We scaled it down rather than seeking an easement, which we had been. We scaled it down to a right-of-entry, just to be able to go do the work on their property, because the actual infrastructure doesn't go on their property. It's just right to the line, and we need to disturb a little bit of their property. But they are still, still have been unresponsive. So, our next thing is to see if, I, I did talk to the engineer and see if there's any way we could work things without touching this other property. So, we may have to look at a, maybe a, a custom inlet or something like that. The, the issue basically is that the neighbor, the last, the property that hasn't gotten back to us, their yard slopes down towards where a new inlet will be, but the slope of their yard, the grade of their yard where it hits the inlet will be below the surface height of the inlet. So, we don't want the water flowing down there hitting the side of the inlet and then causing erosion around it. So, it, it's not a big... A, a large amount of work on the property, but again, they just have not been responding to us. So, we may need to look at potential other designs. And it's so shallow there that it actually could be hand dug. So, if we can figure out, maybe, maybe we have to customize an inlet and cut a slot in it for that water to come in.
Can we cut a slot in the back so that water can drain into it from there?
Right, so maybe we can, right, maybe we can customize that inlet and, and put in our bid specifications that that will have to be hand dug. It, it's, it's very shallow, so that is feasible. That's kind of where we are on that one. Sewer rehabilitation, very close to getting all the subsurface stuff done. We are gonna have to wait for warmer weather to dress the yards and seed them and do the final paving, where we had to dig up the parking lot behind the Grace United Church and across the alleys that we did have to, to do the replacement part on. But again, that, that project has gone very nicely. And Westview Drive, we did have a pre-construction planning meeting, and just today, we got the contractor's plan for temporary water service to keep those homes along Westview Drive served while we're digging up the existing water main. And of course, that project's not gonna start until the weather warms up so that we don't have to worry about the temporary line that's gonna be on the surface freezing. So, the contractor's kind of raring to get going on it, but we don't wanna risk... You know, we start, and it's 45 degrees, and then we get another 20-degree cold snap, and, and we're in trouble. So, we're just gonna have to be patient and wait until the weather's consistently above freezing. Let's see. Oh, just a quick follow-up. Last month, we talked about the, kind of unstable well levels. We did have a transducer problem in one of the wells, and it was not, it was not communicating properly, so we've replaced that, and things seem to be stable now on the well levels. I do have something I was hoping that the city attorney was gonna be here to bring up. If it's okay, can I just roll right into that? Okay. So, there is a sewer line that we, actually, it was the first phase of our sewer rehab, so that'll give you an idea how old the sewer line is. It's the one that run, it's between Crimson Avenue and Hammer Sham Court. It's proximate to the O'Brien Avenue Bridge. Goes from roughly that area down through the woods and across Route 194 to the York Street Pumping Station. And we recently rehabilitated the portion that, basically, from the edge of the state highway right-of-way across Crane Masters through this property up to where it was already new from the stormwater project that we did several years ago there. Well, it turns out that there was never a deed of easement recorded for that sewer line. And the developer of the Meadowbrook community is trying to tidy up all the loose ends that he can. And he's taken upon himself to resurvey it and has asked that we accept the deed of easement for it, which really should be a no-brainer. We just got the survey Friday, and he's asking if we can expedite it. So, I would like to ask you to authorize the mayor to sign the deed of easement, which was, just be Jay's standard language. Once the city attorney has had a chance to review everything, it's, it's, as I said, it's an easement we really should have had probably close to 30 years ago. I'm, I'm not sure how old that sewer line is, but it was terracotta, so... So, as we go forward tonight, if, if we can get authorization for the mayor to execute that easement as soon as the city attorney has it ready. I know the Meadowbrook developer would certainly appreciate being able to wash his hands of that as soon as possible.
Need a motion for that?
That would be, that would be great to get it in a minute.
Yeah, I think you need a motion regarding.
Okay.
Not a consensus on this one.
Right, so we'd be looking for a motion to authorize Mayor Miller to execute the Meadowbrook sewer deed of easement?
Allow Mayor Miller to execute the deed of easement.
I'll second that with the addition of language that, once it's been approved by the city attorney.
Yeah, I can't, I can't approve an easement without it being reviewed first.
I know, I just want to make it official.
It has the attorney's signature on it, right? If I remember for the easements?
I believe it is.
It does for...
I think it does have the legal sufficiency on it.
For legal sufficiency.
But Jay's the one who's gonna draft it. So, he's gonna take our boilerplate language, basically, and plug in the Meadowbrook specifics and refer to the exhibit that the developer just provided Friday.
It'll definitely... Fair enough.
Right, I was just, I was just being clear in the language, that's all.
Additional comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name. Carrie's. Jim, was there anything else that you had? Sounds good.
Thank you.
Proceeding forward. Old Business 3300, Harney Road. Jim, you wanna lead off on that?
Okay. I emailed you two, two documents. There, and once again, we have to fill in some blanks because we are still awaiting the final easement plat. So, and I, I've, I think I've sent some updates out over, you know, the last couple of weeks about this, but just for, you know, I guess, the public. 3300 Harney has an existing house with a failing sewer system, so the health department and property owners would like to connect to the city sewer. To do that, they have to annex. As the surveyors went to develop the annexation plat, they saw that there was a 25-foot strip of ground between the Sewell property, which is in the city limits, and 3300 Harney. The property owner there, this is part of a larger 30-acre or so property, but that property owner is willing to let the 25-foot strip of theirs be annexed into the city so that the house at 3300 can come in. If we were to annex across Harney Road to make them contiguous that way, we would then create an enclave of other properties that, that would be encircled by, by the city. So, we don't wanna close off Harney Road, basically. That's, that's the way that some other properties remain in the county without being isolated from the county. So, we can't annex a strip across Harney Road. As the surveyor looked further into things, they also showed that the property boundaries are roughly 10 feet, and it's not a, an even 10 feet. The, the line isn't straight. But they're roughly 10 feet away from the existing Harney Road right-of-way that was dedicated to the county some time ago. So, we would like to annex, basically, from the existing right-of-way all the way to the rear of 3300 Harney Road, and then all the way up to where it touches the Sewell property. So, there's gonna be like a little 10-foot strip along Harney Road and a 25-foot strip between 3300 and the Sewell Farm that are a second property owner that are also gonna come in at the same time. But that gives us like basically a nice even rectangle, and we won't have this little 10-foot sliver that's still in the county that we have to worry about with some future annexation. So, it really just kind of neatens it up and gives us a more...
As ownership...
A more straight boundary.
Parcels or three?
It's, well, the 25-foot piece and the 10-foot piece are all part of what used to be the Sobel and then the Harner Farm, and it's now owned by Roll the Dice. It's an LLC that, that purchased it. So, it's, it's all the same, part of the same parcel.
No improvements on it?
No, no, neither creates a building lot. So, we don't have the meets and bounds or the plat exhibit finalized yet. But because we, we need to give the county 60 days, we need to get a package to them 60 days before we can hold a public hearing. So... Anticipating that the survey work will be done, and Jay will be able to plug in the last couple of things he needs on those documents, we would like to authorize the mayor to sign the annexation agreement and the consent of the other property with that 25-foot and 10-foot strip so that we can get our packet submitted to Carroll County. We still need to, we still need to draft a resolution, introduce that. We still need to have a public hearing. We still need to vote on the annexation. So, this doesn't finalize anything. It really just lets us move ahead and get the packet submitted to the county without waiting until March. And if, if anything substantive, i- if, for example, the property owner comes back and says, "I don't like what you put in the annexation agreement," then we'll come back to you. But on the assumption that it's just getting the survey stuff straightened out. And I did indicate in my email to you that I recommend that we bring them in at the R20,000 zoning designation, which is what the comprehensive plan is calling for, for them. Because the property at 3300, if we did bring it in at R10, it potentially could be subdivided, and I'm concerned that that could then throw a wrench in the works.
It's currently R20, right?
Right. It's, it's medium, what is it? Medium-density residential, I think, is the land use on the comp plan, and that equates to the R20.
Are there families that live there now?
Sorry?
Are there families that live there now in those properties?
This, this property is vacant right now. It's an estate situation. The owner passed away, and the family is trying to...
So, the LLC is trying to get us to connect?
Oh, no, the, the LLC is, is the owner of the big 30-acre piece.
They're an accidental party, essentially.
Right, right. They're willing to let the little strips be, be annexed. They've expressed interest in annexing, but we are not ready to deal with another 30-acre annexation right now.
I assume that that 25, that 25-foot strip was probably some right-of-access...
Probably.
Maintained.
Yeah, the, the driveway of 3300 actually encroaches onto that 25-foot strip. So, you know, that, as I said, I think, you know, a lot of us were surprised to find out that there was this strip between the Sewell Farm and the house, because we always thought they were neighbors. And when you look on our GIS layers and everything, it looks like, it looks like they are. So, but the survey revealed an inaccuracy in the, in the GIS boundaries.
25, you can't do much with a 25-foot wide strip anyway, so...
And it probably was, you know, to, when, when the lots that have the houses that front Harney Road now, they were subdivided. It was Sobel's addition was a minor subdivision that created those lots. And that subdivision left the, left the 25-foot strip, so you'd think it probably was to be able to access, you know, from an additional point. And the radius of the first lot indicates that maybe somebody was thinking there might eventually be a street going in there or something. So, it's an odd, it's an odd shape for that lot at 3300. But we're gonna, we're gonna try to get it all squared up and nice and neat so that it won't be confusing for the next annexation in the area.
So, do you need...
So, all that said...
So, all that said, this will go, again, you know, before the city attorney, before anybody puts pen to paper to sign. So, all that said, if you could, I would like to see a motion to authorize Mayor Miller to execute the Roll the Dice consent to annex and the annexation agreement for 3300 Harney.
I'll move that we permit Mayor Miller to move forward with signature on the annexation agreement for 3300 and the consent to annex for the Roll the Dice properties.
For a second?
I will second.
Comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Carrie's. Up next, we got new business, monthly financial report. Comments, questions, concerns by council? None. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Monthly financial report.
For a second?
I'll second the motion.
Comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Carrie's. Up next, we have accounts payables. Questions, comments, concerns by council? Hearing none. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Motion to approve the accounts payable.
For a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Carrie's. I know we have an item three on new business. However, I will be not, I will not be making that appointment today. Up next, we have council member reports. Starting with council member Tillman.
We have some busy times in front of us in terms of things moving forward. I know council's aware that there's going to be some discussion about Sewell's Farm and potentially adding the community village zoning overlay. There's a lot of discussion amongst the planning commission regarding the village zoning overlay. Some things that I think we learned, a couple of lessons learned coming out of the first phase of the proposed development at Mountain Branch that will educate us a little bit, and maybe we might need to tweak that ordinance just a little bit. Other than that, the other big thing we have going on, of course, is the comprehensive plan. We had a really good meeting where we discussed and kind of went through all of the data, the survey data from the comprehensive plan, and started to put together our plan for moving forward, all that. So, we certainly welcome everyone to come join us for the comprehensive plan committee. And our next meeting is, hang on a second, and I can tell you... Tuesday before the next regular planning commission, which will be on the last... Trying to find...
Like the 18th?
Yes, 18th, the 6:30.
18th.
There you go. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much, Councilwoman Janey. I really do appreciate that. And, and then, of course, the, the Monday following that is the regular planning commission meeting, and we encourage everyone to attend that also.
Okay, I have the Tonny Town Police Department reports. I'm gonna start with the statistical report for January 2025. There were 426 total dispatched or generated calls for service, 21 total citations issued. 21 total citations issued, 55 total warnings issued, seven adult arrests, and three juvenile arrests. Good news from the department. Our new intern from the Carroll County Tech Center has begun his internship with our department. He comes with ambitions and we hope to help him achieve those. He will be serving out his internship until May. It's very exciting. And as far as community outreach goes, on January 27th, members of the department participated in the winter reading celebration at the Tawny Town Library. The interaction with the community was excellent and the police department was able to distribute giveaways. As far as training and education goes, all active officers received CPR, AED, and first aid online training through the American Red Cross. In specialized training, the LINKS user training was completed this month by Lieutenant Castalar, Corporal Schaefer, Corporal Marshall, Sakadalis, and Myers. LINKS is a database that collects and shares police information between participating law enforcement agencies. This database is used across the country and is a valuable investigative tool. On January 14th and January 15th, Officer Blaze completed standardized field sobriety test training and is now certified to conduct testing. And that is it.
Rep. Tendekin?
Only thing I have is that Councilwoman Foster and myself met with Jim, our city manager, Friday and discussed the Position of Economic Development Director slash Main Street manager. I thought it was a very productive meeting. I think there was a lot of good information and a lot of good thoughts shared along the way in establishing the type of person we need for that position.
Sounds good. Foster?
With regards to that, do you want our comments on the position description or just give them, see that they get to Jim?
Just see that they get to Jim because I'll be, I'll work with him on it.
All right, okay.
Okay.
I mean, if you guys want, yeah, if you guys want, you're, you're free to read them. But I know, I know I'll be working with Jim on it, so.
Okay, fine.
When do you need that by or those?
Friday.
So, if, if we are going to post the position Friday, I'd like to have them...
Tomorrow.
Yeah, well, well.
Yesterday would have been good.
I mean, Wednesday would be great. I, I will be at Leadership Carroll tomorrow, so I won't be doing anything with them anyhow tomorrow.
Okay, tomorrow.
Okay.
But if, if I could have them by Wednesday, that gives me a day to kind of, you know, synthesize them into something. And Mayor Miller, I don't know if you want to give it your okay and then circulate it once, one more time.
Yeah, I'll see you Friday and then we'll circulate it after we go over on Friday.
Okay, right, so, and then, right, once, once everybody's had a chance to put eyes on it, we'll get it up on the website.
I think, probably, probably Monday.
Okay, the city manager went and updated you on most of DPW. The only additional thing I have is on the West Baltimore Street Memorial Park sewer rehab. Monumental paving has completed all but approximately 100 feet of pipe replacement. All settings that were to be lined have been completed. There are few manholes that are to be rehabbed that still need to be completed. These manholes will be done when the weather permits as the temperature needs to be at a certain level for the materials being used. The final restorations to yards and paved areas will be completed when the weather permits. They're anticipating that this work will be completed in late March or April.
I saved one for you and you didn't get it.
I know, I'm looking down my list, I say, oh, you saved me one.
So, some, some good news that, that Kevin did include in his report, and, and I know I've probably emailed you guys about this before, but just for public consumption, we did again meet permit at the wastewater treatment plant for, for the year 2024. So, we were, we're maintaining, so we're back on track and we're maintaining the, the course now, so.
Like the, the lines are roughly parallel to what they ended up being last year, so.
Yeah, so we've, we've, and, and again, you know, nature can always throw us a curve. Something can always break, but we've, you know, we have some, some practices in place now that we didn't a few years ago that we can hopefully respond more quickly when, when something, you know, does, out of the ordinary, does happen. So, we have, you know, more real-time testing that we're doing now instead of waiting to get lab results back and then trying to adjust where then we've had flows for a week before we know that anything was wrong. So, so they've really made a lot of progress out there. So, I think that our compliance is going to be very strong again this year, so.
Good, thank you, Jim, looking for a motion of adjournment?
Before we adjourn, I would like to mention how, how well I thought the meeting on the 29th went regarding Main Street. There was a lot of good discussion. We've, you know, come to the consensus that we do want to move forward with Main Street. So, I just want to put out there, what do we want to do in terms of, of our next steps? We still have all of the things from the report from the end of last year and all of those things to address. Are we going to try to hold another, hold another meeting or maybe another couple of meetings to work through those things as a separate meeting? Or what's the, what's the plan to do that going forward? And I mentioned it because it'd be nice to have all of this in place before we do hire a new Economic Development Director.
I'd be fine for a March meeting. I'm not going to lie, my February is looking torn up right now.
Well, and it's kind, we don't have a whole lot of February left, so. But looking for a consensus on that from y'all, you know, I, I, you know, I think we have, we've addressed a lot of the things. I think we still need to address the scope and mission of, of Main Street and what it is we, we expect the organization to do. And then, of course, there are all of the, the points that were raised in the report that Jamie she presented that need to be addressed, so.
I don't know what my calendar looks like off the top of my head, but are you okay? I'm going to direct Jim to kind of get everybody's calendars together and name for something in March.
That's fine, I just, I want to make sure it didn't fall, it hasn't fallen off the table.
March.
Yeah, it depends, you know, what date you come up with.
Yeah, I'm going to have Jim try to coordinate between us all because again, I don't even know what my calendar looks like off the top of my head right now.
Right.
I'll have Jim get with everybody and try to figure out a date that works for everyone.
Okay.
I'd say one thing too.
To your concerns, when we met on Friday, we discussed having everything in place before this person is hired.
More thing to do.
Kind of a big lift, but...
It may be a big lift, but it'd be nice, it'd be good to do that.
And, and again, it, it really depends upon how, how involved you want stakeholders outside of city government to be in the process because the more people you involve, the, you know, the longer the process is going to take. Now, you know, what I am thinking, you know, we, we kicked around the idea that, you know, 80% of a framework should be in place and then let the volunteers figure out the last 20 rather than asking the volunteers to figure out 70 or 80 like we did the last time. And Councilman Tillman, you, I think, have, have hit a very good point a couple of times in that a lot of the members didn't really understand their roles. So, I think that might be an area that we can focus on also. Appoint a new board, you know, that, that everybody's role is going to be a little bit more clear for them than... But we can always, we can always come up with drafts and...
Yeah, I just want to say one quick thing because Councilmember Fuller is not here. Just some dates. The Easter egg hunt's coming up on April the 12th from 1:00 to 3:00 at Memorial Park. And Earth Day cleanup is April 26th from 1:00 to 3:00 in all city parks. And that's a great way for kiddos to earn their service hours. So, just putting those two dates out there because they're going to be here quick.
Thank you both for that.
Sounds good, looking for a motion of adjournment?
Okay, adjourned.
Looking for a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.